Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Bossier Parish School Board regular session of the board meeting on August 21st. We will start out with our prayer by Ms. Darby, our pledge of allegiance by Mr. Falting. But before that, some prayer requests and comments from Superintendent Roland.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you tonight. Thank you for being here, President Newman, board members. We do have several here I want to bring to your attention. First of all, continue to pray for Ms. Tanya Arnold, Houghton High teacher battling ALS. And then we have a litany of cancer employees, our employees battling cancer. Houghton High teachers Danielle Bryant and Miki Wallingsford, transportation mechanic Jimmy Ford, undergoing chemo and radiation, waiting on surgery. Technology department Huey Johnson, Houghton Middle School teacher Ms. Heather Valentine, Ms. Vicki Thrash, praise she is responding to treatment. I know Whitney and her entire family are praising the Lord over that. Benton High counselor Ms. Beth Gephardt, Plantation Park teacher Ms. Alexis Tasby, and Airline High teacher Ms. Shannon Bothell. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you Superintendent Roland. Ms. Darby?
Father God, thank you for this day and every day of our lives that you've given us. And we ask Father God that you will stop by the rooms and the homes of the persons that our superintendent has mentioned. We ask that you would touch them with your hands, with your healing hands. And we ask Father God that you will give them the courage and the strength that they need. And then, Father God, we pray for our students as well as our faculty, staff, and the parents. Someone once said, Father God, that if you will, the teacher will come when you're ready to listen. Let those students open up their ears and listen. And then, Father God, we ask that you will get the teachers to give them understanding and patience with those students. And Father God, bless each and everyone here, their homes, and their prospective families. In your name we do pray. Amen.
Agenda item 1.02, approval of the minutes of the regular session of the board for August 7th, 2025. Motion by Mr. Bertrand, second by Mr. Bockhouse. Motion passes. Item 1.03, approval of the agenda for the regular session of the board for August 21st, Motion by Ms. Smith and a second by Mr. Bertrand. Motion passes. Moving on, recognitions and presentations. Agenda item 2.01, recognition. BPS Good News presented by our communications and media officer, Ms. Sonia Bales.
Good evening, President Newman, Superintendent Roland, board members, and to all of our school family members. We love when we have a packed house because that means that our students are back in class and we have officially started the 2025-26 school year. But we want to take the opportunity to be able to recognize some big wins that happened over the summer months because our students were especially busy. First, we want to welcome Carly Riley to the podium. Carly, would you please come forward? So Carly is a freshman at Airline High School, and she is bringing with her state and national honors. Last year, when she was in eighth grade at Coke Middle School, she was also a student in Bipstil's pre educator program, she earned the right to be able to compete on the national stage by taking first place at the Louisiana Educators Rising State Conference. And there, she stood out amongst more than 1,000 middle and high school students in the creative lecture competition, and she emerged victorious in first place as the state champion. It gets even better than that, but yes, applause for that. So she then got to advance to the national competition. And over the summer, she traveled to Orlando, Florida for the National Educators Rising Conference where she competed with more than 3,500 students nationwide. No pressure. The creative lecture category challenges students to deliver an original, thought-provoking talk on a topic that's relevant to education, and her centered around artificial intelligence, AI, in the classroom. Well, needless to say, she wowed the judges, and we are so excited to say that Carly won the national title. Our friends from Bossier Federal Credit Union sponsor our Award of Excellence medallion, and we are so happy to have Sarah Owens join us here tonight on behalf of Bossier Federal. So she has a special presentation for Carly. I'll let her give that to her. And also with us tonight is a representative from Speaker of the House and 4th Congressional District, U.S. Representative Mike Johnson's office. Matt McKee is here also with a special presentation. I'm going to let Matt come to the podium.
Thank you, Ms. Sonia. On behalf of Speaker Mike Johnson, we'd like to present you a certificate of congressional commendation from Speaker Mike Johnson to you upon winning the 2025 National Educators Rising Conference Creative Lecture Competition national title.
We are so proud, and we also just want to give a special shout out to two ladies in our audience. First of all, Regina Digilormo, she oversees the pre educator program at Bipstil, and also Dr. Tracy Burrell, who is creating those pipeline programs in our district, in our schools to turn today's students into tomorrow's educators. So Carly, congratulations. We are so excited for your future, your future that is hopefully with Bossier Schools. So now we zero in our sights on some amazing archers who hit the bull's eye, literally and figuratively, and put Bossier Schools in the state and national spotlight. We are going to begin first with our 2025 state champions, claiming both the IBO 3D and Bullseye state titles at the elementary level, Benton Intermediate School. Benton Intermediate Archers, come on down. We'd like for them to come forward, as well as their coach, Amber Kraft. So not only did Benton Intermediate claim the state title for elementary team, but there were also two Tigers who swept individual state honors as well. And I don't know if they're able to be here tonight, but Jace Ham, is Jace here? All right, there's Jace. Jace shot his way to the top as the IBO 3D individual state champion. So he's the man right here. Also Colt Tyree, Colt, he's here too. All right, he hit the bull's eye, literally, and took home the Bullseye state championship. Let's give Colt a round of applause also. Now I'm going to have you guys stay up here with me because then we're going to talk about the middle school level. And our next school is no stranger to winning competitions. So make way for your state champions from Benton Middle School and Coach Terry Streetman. Let's have them come forward. So Benton Middle swept the middle school competition because just like Benton Intermediate, they won first place in both the IBO 3D and Bullseye. So your state champions right here in both of those competitions. Congratulations to Benton Middle School. And we also want to single out a young man. Big applause for Ariav Joshi. Are you here? All right, raise your hand. Let me just say that he accomplished something remarkable because he won both the individual IBO 3D and the Bullseye state champions as an individual and for his team at Benton Middle School. So congratulations to him. And we still aren't finished talking about state champions because we have not tackled high school yet. Airline High School, come on down. We welcome them, as well as their coach Valerie Kirchhoff. So the Vikings were on fire in the Bullseye competition, and they won bragging rights as the state champions also. So congratulations to our Airline Viking Archers, our state Bullseye champions. And then there was a young lady whose archery skills we have watched over the years, Charlie Long. Would you please come forward? We watched Charlie since she was young. She's now a junior at Benton High School, and she won the individual titles in both the Bullseye and the IBO 3D. She is your high school state champion twice over. Let's give her a big round of applause. Now that's a lot of state champions, and we are still not finished. We are going to now roll over to the Nationals, and I'm going to ask Olivia Robertson from Houghton Middle School, and Zoe Bane, and Brylee Dobbins from Houghton High to also So the summer was busy with two national competitions. First, from the land of surf and sand in Myrtle Beach, where first, second, and third place finishes are generally the equivalent of like gold, silver, bronze, like in the Olympics. And we are thrilled to be able to recognize several of our top finishers. So from that competition, we want to congratulate, first of all, Benton Middle School for taking the second place or silver spot in the Bullseye. So congratulations to the team for that win. And we also had several individuals at the top of the leaderboard. Olivia Robertson, if you'll raise your hand one more time for me. She attends Houghton Middle School. She had a stellar season. She shot a 292 out of a 300 at Nationals, ranking her third out of 488 girls in the middle school division. And then she ranked second place out of 163 girls in the seventh grade division. Way to go, Olivia. That is amazing. And there was another Houghton Buccaneer who made the leaderboard, Brylee Dobbins. If you'll raise your hand for us. She attends Houghton High School, and she shot a 290 out of a 300 in the IBO 3D, ranking her among the top five in the nation in the high school division. Let's give it up for her. Also staking her claim in the Bullseye, Charlie Long shot a 292 out of a 300 and came out in the top five in Bullseye. So a round of applause for Charlie. So that was Myrtle Beach, and now we're going to talk about the Nationals in Louisville, Kentucky. And this is where Bossier Schools made their presence known. Everybody knows who Bossier Schools is in Louisville, Kentucky at the competition. And we're going to start with our individual winners first. In the high school center shot IBO 3D division, Zoe Bane and Charlie Long, they were each other's competition, going neck and neck. Charlie shot a 295, taking the second place win. That is awesome. Zoe scored a 296, winning first place and the national center shot title. So then this is fun right here. There was the high school center point Bullseye competition, and Zoe and Charlie found themselves battling it out again. Zoe shot a 296, Charlie scored a 297. So congratulations to Zoe for taking second place, and Charlie for bringing home the national center shot title. That is awesome. Turning now to the IBO 3D middle school division at the center shot Nationals, two Benton Middle School students earned spots in second and third place. Colin Hansen, where are you? Are you here, Colin? There we go. Colin shot a 292, and he took third place, so big props to him for that. And then Ariav Joshi shot a 293, and he secured the second place spot in the nation. Congratulations to him. In the high school IBO 3D, all eyes were on two Houghton Bucks. Brylee, raise your hand again for me, Brylee. She was on fire, scoring a 294. She came in third place in the nation. And then shooting an incredible 298 was Zoe Bane. She took first place, and ladies and gentlemen, she is your national champion. So then there was the IBO 3D middle school division. And what I appreciate is all of you families understand what I'm talking about. I had to run all of this by Coach Streetman and Coach Kraft today to make sure I had everything correct here. But we want to congratulate Holland Hicks. Holland, if you'll raise your hand. Holland finished with a 294, and he took the third place individual win in the IBO 3D for middle school. Congratulations, Holland. And then huge news here. Drumroll, please. Somebody can give me a drumroll, right? There we go, all right. Benton Middle School did it again, competing among 152 teams. Ladies and gentlemen, we are ecstatic to say they took first place and are once again So Sarah Owens with Bossier Federal Credit Union has her work cut out for her because they all get medals, the Award of Excellence medallion. So we are so excited to be able to hand these out to all of you. It'll just join some of the hardware that I know you've already earned at state and Nationals. And while she does that, I also want to be able to invite Matt McKee, as well as Pam Graff, forward with Congressman Mike Johnson's office, because they also have some presentations to make to our state and national winning teams. So let's welcome them back.
Thank you. Very impressive stuff. Okay, so I have another certificate of congressional commendation from Speaker Mike Johnson, presented to Benton Intermediate School upon being named the 2025 Louisiana Bullseye and 3D state champions. Also have another one. I have another certificate of congressional commendation from Speaker Mike Johnson, presented to Airline High School archery team upon being named the 2025 Louisiana Bullseye state
Such an exciting night for our archers. Superintendent Roland and board, thank you so much for allowing our office to be here on behalf of Speaker Johnson. We really appreciate all you do to feed into these kids and give them these amazing opportunities. This is an amazing opportunity for me as well because I get to present a certificate to my granddaughter's team. So I won't embarrass her any further, I won't call her name or anything, but they did such a great job this year, and I was able to make every, I told her she'd try out for the team. I would go to every practice, or not practice, but tournament, and I actually got to see them win, and they did a great job. So I'm not going to read both certificates, they're state and national, but this says certificate of congressional commendation from Speaker Mike Johnson, presented to Benton Middle School, 2025 National Archery Schools Program IBO 3D national champions.
I'd like to say something real quick. Her granddaughter's first year being on the archery team, and she was actually on our team's floor. She works, is a very hard worker, and she came a long way from day one, all the way to the national tournament and the world tournament. So she really helped the team out a lot.
Well, again, we want to thank Matt McKee and also Pam Graff, as well as Sarah Owens with Bossier Federal Credit Union for honoring all of our archers and their amazing feats here. We love having a packed house, and we love being able to, at the end of archery season, bring them back here because we're always on top, and that is a really good feeling, isn't it? So let's just give them a big round of applause again. We are looking forward to what 2025-26 has in store. So we'll see all of you back here next year, all right? Congratulations. And I'll just tell you what, why don't you all just stay here, because there are a lot of you, because we just have a couple quick more, two more quick recognitions. So if you'll just stay tight. We are proud to congratulate another Benton Tiger for pursuing her educational dreams by receiving her doctorate degree. Would you please help me congratulate and welcome Dr. Erin Wink to the podium? So Dr. Wink is the assistant principal at Benton High School. In this past weekend, she graduated from Baylor University with her Doctor of Education in Learning and Organizational Change, which is, again, a huge accomplishment. Her dissertation was titled, I'm wondering if you know this off the top of your head, "Engaging High School Families to Support Student Needs: A Qualitative Embedded Case Study Investigating Perspectives of Louisiana High School Teachers and Parents Towards Equitable Collaborations." Well, she passed with flying colors, and we just want to commend Dr. Wink for living what we encourage all of our students and our employees to be, and that is to be lifelong learners. She set a goal, and she set her sights on it, just like all of you did, and then she crossed that finish line and accomplished it. So let's give her another round of applause, and she also receives an Award of Excellence Congratulations, Dr. Wink. We're very proud of you. And last but not least, someone else that we want to cheer for is actually sitting on stage. And Superintendent Roland, I'm going to pass it over to you now for that recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Bales, President Newman, board members. We want to celebrate and recognize one of our very own that's up here tonight. We want to, first of all, we're congratulate and extremely proud to have a 2025 Maddie Brewer-McCullough 50-over-50 award honoree, and that dear lady is Ms. Sam Darby. So a little bit about this award. Ms. Darby, in 2010, she made history as the first African-American woman elected to public office in Bossier City, serving with distinction on the Bossier Parish School Board during her tenure. She's championed one of the largest pay raises ever for employees from the district, as well as the 2012 bond proposal that we just completed. She continues her legacy of service through her current roles at LSU Health Shreveport, where she serves as the coordinator of the Master of Public Health program, and at LSU Health New Orleans School of Nursing, where she is the academic coordinator for the OCIS nursing program. Her profession, her professional mission spans from elementary outreach to graduate level support, and her heart for education reflects her belief that learning transforms lives. Ms. Darby will be celebrated on September 4th at 6:00 p.m. at the Bossier Civic Center. She has a list of just accolades here that we could go on and on about, but on behalf of the board, on behalf of all the faculty and staff and students of Bossier Parish, Ms. Darby, we congratulate you and well deserved.
Congratulations to Ms. Darby. And that concludes my report. And again, to our archers, congratulations as well.
If I could get, if I could get everybody just hang tight real quick. One more, couple little things real quick before all the commotion, before we get into the business. I want to recognize our B, since everybody's still here, recognize our BYL attendees. If you will stand up and state your name and the school that you're representing as well, we want to make sure we give you the proper recognition and see a board member to sign your form when you're done.
My name is Melanie Howard, and I'm from Airline High School.
And just, just the one. Oh, we have one on both sides. That's why we did this.
My name is Zoe Bane from Myrtle.
All right. That's multitasking, so congratulations, though you hit the bull's eye. And again, Ms. Pam and Matt, please give our best to Speaker Johnson, let him know we appreciate his continued support of Bossier Parish Schools. We'll give everybody a chance, quick minute to depart unless you want to stay for the fun business part. We'll be here for a few more minutes. Go ahead. Go ahead. Request Updates and Report. We have Agenda Item 3.01, Request Approval of Pupil Progression Plan for 2025-2026, Presented by Mr. Waylon Bates, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, ESSA, and Academic Affairs. Mr. Bates?
Good evening, Superintendent Roland, President Newman, and Board Members. Tonight, we're bringing the pupil progression plan to you. I shared this with everybody earlier this week. This is all things academic in our school system. This is something that we have to do by law and we have to follow some strict guidelines for that as far as the retention and promotion of students all the way from K through 12. This included all the things that were in the bullet points and the emails that I shared with you, everything from elementary school, middle school, and high school. We followed all the procedures with Bulletin 1566, Bulletin 741, which included a committee of three principals, one from each grade band, excuse me, elementary, middle, and high school, as well as hosting a parent informational meeting. Nobody showed for the meeting, it was here at the BIC, but it was available for those that had questions. And it was posted by Mr. Thompson on our website for a solid week. He put it up there for public viewing and comment as well. Collaborative effort, curriculum supervisors, Dr. Younger and the Special Ed Department as well as several others. It's been shared with Mr. Roland and we're seeking approval of this so it can be posted and provided to our schools so it can give them the guidance they need for students. And it's obviously not as popular as archery because as soon as I got up to talk, they all bolted, so. Any question?
Any questions from the board?
Make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Okay, have a motion by Ms. Smith, a second by Ms. Brotherton. Now we will ask for any official questions or comments from the board before we vote. As there are none, please vote. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Bates. Agenda Item 3.02, Request Declaration of Surplus, Presented by Ms. Carrie Douglas, Chief Procurement Officer.
Good evening, President Newman, Superintendent Roland, members of the board. I just have one quick consideration tonight, and that is per the memo dated August 18th, staff is requesting that the items listed within be declared surplus, please.
Have a motion by Ms. Darby and a second by Mr. Bertrand. Please vote.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item 3.03, Report, Finance Committee Meeting Held at 4:30 PM on August 21st, 2025, Presented by Mr. Logan McConthy, Chairperson.
The Finance Committee met today, August 21st, at 4:30 here at the BIC. Eleven of the board members were present. The first item was the Committee recommends the Bojor Parish School Board approve final revised budget for fiscal year 24-25. Motion by Mr. Eric Falting, second by Ms. Sam Darby. The vote passed unanimously, 11 to 0. Final resolution is it carries. The second item was discussion only, May 2025 financial statement. Ms. Nisha Vanberg, CFO, updated the board on the May 2025 financial statements. And the third item we had was also for discussion only, was finance and payroll update. CFO Ms. Nisha Vanberg updated to the board on finances, payroll, employees will receive their pay raises and their next check as well as their back school check, so.
One note of correction, Mr. Chairman.
Item 3.04, Item 1 of the Finance Committee meeting, that was a request for approval of the final revised budget for fiscal year 24-25.
I don't read real good, I guess.
And that passed out of committee, so we need to vote on that as the whole board, please. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And that covers Item 304, 305, and 306. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on, 3.07, Report, Building and Grounds Planning and Development Committee Meeting Held at 5:00 PM on August 21st, 2025, Presented by Ms. Tammy Smith, Chairwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. All members were present, with other members also in attendance. We have several items, but for discussion only, E-Rate Project Updates, Presented by Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson presented an overview of the significant technological advancements and infrastructure projects undertaken by the Bojor Parish Schools Technology Department over the last five years. He highlighted the strategic utilization of the E-Rate Program to modernize our network, infrastructure, enhance security, and expand connectivity, directly supporting a dynamic and secure learning environment for our students and staff. Item number two, the Committee recommends the Bojor Parish School Board authorize staff to proceed with the individual projects of the 2026 HVAC replacement projects with contract amendments for design services and bidding of the project as recommended by staff. Motion was by Mr. Bullard, second by Mr. McConthy, and it was unanimous.
Board, this is out of committee, please vote. Motion passes.
Item three, the Committee recommends the Bojor Parish School Board authorize staff to approve the individual project as Horton High School baseball facility improvements, home plate area turf funded by the Horton Baseball Booster Club. This motion was made by Mr. Falting, seconded by Ms. Brotherton, and it also carried unanimously.
Board, this passed out of committee, please vote. Motion passes.
The Committee recommends the Bojor Parish School Board enter into a local services agreement with the city of Bojor City for the required utility easement located at 490 Benton Road, Bojor City, 71111. Property and authorizes superintendent to sign related documents. Motion passed by, who was it, Robert? Yeah, Bertrand and Eric Falting, and it also passed unanimously.
Board, this is out of committee, please vote.
The Committee recommends that the Bojor Parish School Board authorize...
Motion passes.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
He was waiting.
Excuse me. The Committee recommends the Bojor Parish School Board authorize staff to proceed with the individual project as Bojor Memorial Stadium field lighting improvements with contract amendments for design services and bidding of the project funded by the committed construction fund as recommended by staff. Motion by Mr. Falting, second by Ms. Brotherton, unanimously carried.
Board, this is out of committee, please vote. Motion passes. I'll wait.
I thought she was wanting to like hauls and, you know. Okay. The Committee recommends that the Bojor Parish School Board authorize staff to proceed with the individual project as new classroom addition for Benton High School, with contract amendments for design services and bidding of the project at an estimated total project cost of 10.6 million, funded by the committed construction fund as recommended by staff. The motion was made by Mr. Bullard, seconded by Ms. Brotherton, and it carried unanimously.
Board, this is out of committee, please vote.
Madam Chairman, real quick, Item 3.12, who was the motion and second on that?
Number four?
The four, the fourth one?
Yes, Item four.
About the local service agreement for 4900?
I believe so.
It was Mr. Bertrand and Mr. Falting.
I think that should have been Mr. Bullard instead of Mr. Bertrand on that.
Okay, so it was Mr. Bullard? Okay, she just had initials, so.
Okay, yeah. We just, Mr. Bertrand heard that, wanted to make sure the minutes were clear on that.
I don't just sound...
Yeah. Thank you for catching that, Mr. Bertrand, for the clarification.
Alright. Okay. Now, for the next item.
Seven.
On that one, we're going to do 7A, 7B, and 7C since we took them all individual, so there'll be three motions for this one. The Committee recommends the Bojor Parish School Board declare 17.177 acres in Bojor City, Assessment 0807, Assessor's Parcel S702-0016, S702-0017, S702-0026B, and S702-0029 as surplus property, authorize, is it ally? Ally real estate to obtain an appraisal for fair market value and authorize a sale per policy DFL and authorize a superintendent to sign related documents. That was made by Ms. Brotherton, seconded by Logan McConthy, and the vote was four to one.
Alright, Board, this is Agenda Item 3.14, Item 7A from the Building and Grounds Committee, and it passed out of committee, please vote. Motion passes.
The Committee recommends the Bojor Parish School Board declare 16.43 acres in Benton, Louisiana, Assessment Number 176924, Assessor's Parcel 191311C as surplus property, authorize ally real estate to obtain an appraisal for fair market value and authorize the sale per policy DFL and authorize a superintendent to sign related documents. Motion was made by Mr. Bullard, seconded by Ms. Brotherton, and the motion carried.
Board, this is Item 7B, out of committee, please vote.
And lastly, the Committee recommends the Bojor Parish School Board declare 22.05 four acres in Bojor City, Louisiana, Assessment 176417, Assessor's Parcel 1712229B3, 1712271H, SH61-004, SH61-0005, SH61-0006B, and SJ28-0002 as surplus property, authorize ally real estate to obtain an appraisal for fair market value, authorize a sale per policy of DFL and authorize a superintendent to sign related documents. Motion was made by Mr. Falting, seconded by Mr. McConthy, and it carried five to one. No, five to zero, sorry.
Board, this is Item 7C, out of committee, please vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report after I vote.
Motion passes. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Moving on, Agenda Item 3.15, Request Approval of Trip Request.
Thank you, President Newman. All these requests are in order.
Thank you, Superintendent Roland. Have a motion by Mr. Bullard and a second by Ms. Darby. Please vote. Motion passes. Agenda Item 4.01, Announcements, Superintendent's Comments.
Thank you, President Newman, and thank you guys for everything tonight. Certainly, I'm just an honor to be here with you tonight. Hey, next week gets busy. Before I get to next week though, this past Tuesday, Mr. Bates and our elementary supervisor, Ms. Kimmy Smith, went to Baton Rouge for the August Bessie Meeting. And Bojor Schools was recognized for our exceptional growth in literacy. And so we want to thank Mr. Bates and his entire department that have worked, especially in the elementary sector where we got that. And so, just so proud of what our elementary schools are doing and how they are really thriving at this point in time. So, Mr. Bates, thank you and your team on behalf of all of us. So, hey. So this coming Tuesday, just to put on your calendar, this coming Tuesday at 3:45, State Superintendent Dr. Cade Brumley is going to be at Legacy Elementary at 3:45. He's going to have a 30-minute faculty meeting with legacy teachers. Our team will be there. We're inviting all of our board members that want to come. Please come and be a part of that if you can. 3:45, look, you might need to set your watch a little early because car line at Legacy is Talladega 500 times 10. So just come and ready to get run over, right? And no, I'm just, I'm kidding, but we will have you some spots if y'all kind of let me know who all might want to attend. And then at 6 o'clock that evening, he's going to be speaking at the Republicans Women's Conference Meeting at Silver Star at 6:00 PM. And everyone is invited to that as well if you'd like to come and be a part of that. So that'll be at 6 o'clock at Silver Star. I think there's a meet and greet, right, Ms. Poole, at 5:30?
And then they will also, we will also be recognizing Ms. Jennifer Burris.
And... Also recognizing, thank you, Ms. Poole, Ms. Burris as a middle school principal of the year. And then things really start getting going fast for us as we get to the weekend. We've got volleyball jamborees going on, we have the Bojor Lions Club Football Jamboree Friday, next Friday night, starting at 5:45, Parkway versus Benton at 7:15, Bojor versus Plain Dealing, and 8:45, Airline and Horton. So a lot of events leading up to that this week. We're out Monday night and then Tuesday and then, and again, Thursday and Friday. We have the freshman jamboree Thursday night. So we'll get to Friday and then collapse, right? So Monday, we'll take Labor Day, we'll be, schools and centers and we'll be closed on Labor Day. We do want to let you know about September 3rd. I won't have a chance to be in front of you by then, but the building right behind the BIC here, we're going to have the grand reopening of the Parent Center, guys. I can't tell you, go by and see that facility. Ms. Erin May is our facilitator under Mr. Bates and his team here. She has reimagined, revitalized. This is a, this is really a privilege for us to have this here in Bojor Parish. We're seeing parents already come in, we're registering pre-K parents out of the center. All kind of magnificent things are happening and Erin May is leading that charge for us. And then of course, our next board meeting, Thursday, September 4th, 6:00 PM here at the BIC, our regular scheduled meeting. We got a big night that night. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Superintendent Roland. Moving on, Agenda Item 5.01, Adjournment of the Regular Session of the Board. Motion by Mr. Bertrand and a second by Mr. Falting, please vote. Motion passes, meeting adjourned.